Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 6, 2013. It's 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do anything else, let's put the flags in the appropriate location. Yeah. How was it? Can I move that then? Let's do it right. I, uh, look. Of course it happens. Okay. With that, a little bit of housekeeping. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nett.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed with our normal agenda, I would like to welcome back two of our longtime regulars, Mr. Ron DeCosta, Mr. Jack Carroll. Welcome back, gentlemen. Both went through some interesting medical procedures. Everything came out well. I guess "came out well" is the... No pun intended. Anyway, welcome back. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the February 19 City Council meeting and the February 26 City Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. With council consensus, we've been requested to move the Citizens Academy presentation up in our agenda for some personal reasons. Is that satisfactory to council? That being the case, we're going to move Agenda Item 9 up to the first spot on the agenda. Mr. Landon?
Well, Mayor, boy, catching me off guard. This is...well, Cindy can tell you how many of these academies we've had. It's a great program. Really appreciate the people who are willing to spend the time to learn more about what we do, and the feedback we always get is very positive. And this is our typical graduation ceremony that Cindy is going to lead with the assistance of Mayor Nett.
Okay, this is, in fact, the 27th graduating class...
Press the red button. I learn something new every time I come here. Hi, I'm Cindy Brownfield, and this is, in fact, the 27th graduating class of the Citizens Academy. We've had a great time these past couple of months visiting all of the departments, and I think most of the mayor and the council members have had an opportunity to meet the participants. So with Mayor Nett's assistance, I'm going to call up each of the graduates, and then what I want you to do when you get your certificate is stay, because we're going to do a class photo immediately after. So, let's see, do you want me to...
You read this one?
Oh, yes.
Okay. The first graduate is David Alfen. We have Barbara Blyden. We have Ler... Don't go yet. We have Leroy Blyden. And Patricia Broch. Oh, I'm sorry, Patricia's not able to be with us. And David Collier. We have Emily Cortez Torado. And Charlotte Robenstein is going to come up, and she is completing this graduation, and she attended last time as well.
One, two, three. What a great-looking group. Okay, one, two, three, and then let me get this... I have a camera.
Yeah, we don't want people...
Don't hide.
All right, one, two, three. And maybe one more. Open the mask. It's a... It's hard to get everyone, but I can send you... It doesn't work. Thank you.
They make it, there's a software program that allows you to stick pictures together. It's an app for your cellphone cameras. I'm sure they make it great.
What's the total?
Sorry.
What was the total? Class size?
The class size? We had 32 graduates.
Congratulations to all the graduates. Agenda item number...now Agenda Item Number 3, Presentation, Shop Local, It's a Big Deal. Mr. Landon, you want to introduce this one?
Sure. One of the efforts of our Palm Coast Business Assistance Center is to actually try to support and help every business, particularly our small businesses in town, and one of the ways we can do that is spend money at them. Right, Joe?
Spending money is a good thing.
And so Joe is trying to help us all spend money here locally, and he's going to talk about his new campaign.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, thanks for the chance to be here tonight to talk about something which I think really is a big deal. And it's a big deal on two fronts. First, we know across the country, in every community after each other, the conclusion is always the same: Consumers want to support the local business within their towns and cities. Shop Local is another attempt, it replaces Small Business Saturday. Small Business Saturday, if you remember, was the first initiative back in August of last year, trying to engage the small business community as well as the general population to shop local. You've often heard me say that if every household in Flagler County spent $25 a month at a small business, we would generate over $1 million of income to those small businesses collectively. We've also heard it said many times across the country that the health of the economy is dependent upon small businesses. And what better way do we have to grow our local economy by adding $1 million into their small business revenues? When you think of that, when we talk about the strategic issues involved here, one is that, first of all, small business meets one of the strategic goals that I presented to council last year as part of one of the BAC initiatives. Secondly, on a higher level, small business development and growing our local economy meets a more strategic objective which I'll call economic development, because in every area of economic development, we're simply looking to add jobs. $1 million into the hands of small businesses will definitely add jobs. So we have a lot of good things going for us. Why Shop Local and what happened to Small Business Saturday? Small Business Saturday did not gauge the traction that we thought it would gauge with both within the small business community as well as with consumers. Despite the amount of advertising that the city put forth, we never could make it work. The Shop Local program, I think, addresses that on two fronts. One is that we're partnering with the Chamber and working with them, and I speak at LEEDs groups to talk about the benefits of the Shop Local program. This is an opportunity for every business in Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, and Benel to advertise at no cost to the business by registering through the BAC as part of the Waste Pro program. So that's a really critical thing. The other part that was probably even more significant in why Small Business Saturday never really worked was that we just could not engage the consumer. Consumers understand deals. Shop Local is a deal. If we want this program to work, it's going to depend upon the consumer to drive the businesses to register. Currently, we have about 22 businesses that have registered as part of the rewards program. 14 or 15 of those are small businesses that we work with. So we're out there working and talking to people about the benefits. If you want to see a lot of businesses register, then every consumer should go that's participating as part of the recycling rewards program. Every business, every customer should go and spend money at those businesses that are advertising. I can assure you that every other business that's not on that website will get there very quickly. The second leverage point that I think consumers have is that when they shop, we have our Shop Local emblem, and every business actually has that as a sticker for their window. If a consumer goes into a store, a small business store, and you don't see the Shop Local sticker, ask the business owner why they're not participating. This is no cost. This is truly a benefit to everyone of how we can make this program work, how everyone is going to get behind it. And again, I stress that across the country, shopping local really is a big deal, and you look on website after website, and you find people find...come back to the same conclusion, that it's the best way of growing the local economy. So that's what the program is. I think it's off to a good start, much better than where we were on Small Business Saturday. And we're out talking about this all the time, and so I would continue to ask the small businesses to register. We're out there promoting that, but it's going to really depend upon the local communities for people to go and shop. So, questions that you might have about the program?
Mr. McGuire.
Joe, how are you going to measure your success? You said that the Saturday was not successful. How will you be able to determine if the Shop Local program is successful or not?
I always will measure things in terms of the economic side of it. So really, for those businesses that are participating, we'll go to them and find out, so are you getting traffic as a result of the program? I encourage everyone that is...all the businesses that are participating to have a deal on the website. And by a deal, I mean not $5 off. I mean something that is going to attract the consumer to want to go to that retailer or that local business and spend their money. Right? I tend to think Groupon-type ads. I'm not suggesting everyone do buy one, get one free, but you can certainly come up with better types of advertising than $5 off, because you're going to get $5 off anyway, someplace.
So are you going to measure the sales after the program is installed compared to the average sales for those days prior to the program?
We sometimes...when we were doing Small Business Saturday, we had trouble trying to get some sales ratios. I think with this program, what we're going to do is to go back to those businesses to see if their sales have picked up, and we'll go by what they tell us.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think the other...there's another way of getting that, too, which is really the consumers that are participating as part of the recycling rewards program also have a chance to provide feedback into how the program is working for them. And so for the consumer side, if they're not seeing that this is working for them, then let us know, because we can get back out to the business community and say, here's what we're hearing, here's why this is working, or here's why it's not working.
Mr. Lewis.
Joe, you said you were working with the Chamber also.
Yes.
Will the Chamber be sending out bulletins or notices to their members?
I believe that they've already sent information out, and I know that they have actually scheduled all of the LEEDs groups for me, and so I'm over there, and I work with the Chamber now all the time on these types of programs.
Well, we have a dual responsibility. The local businesses need to step to the plate and sign up, and consumers, we need to support our local businesses. I have pleridge over the years of talking to residents who are some of the early pioneers in Palm Coast. It would have been real tough to get them to shop locally then, when there was one convenience store and one gas station, but now, we've been pretty successful in attracting retailers, so shop local, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 4, Presentation of Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and Presentation of the GFO Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Mr. Landon, any introductory comments?
Yes, please. Chris, come on up and bring...if you were going to bring anybody with you, I wasn't sure. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors.
I'd be happy to.
There's minimum requirements in financial reporting, and our finance department actually exceeds those and therefore receives the award, not just in budget, but also our financial reports. And tonight, we're asking the mayor to present to our new Finance Director, Chris Quinn, those awards, and with the help of, once again, Cindy Brownfield.
The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Palm Coast for its comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year 2011. This is the highest recognition for government accounting and financial reporting, and the city has received this award for 11 consecutive years. The City of Palm Coast has also received the organization's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal 2012, and this award reflects the commitment of the city and its finance department staff to meeting the highest principles for governmental budgeting, and this is our ninth consecutive year receiving this award. So those are the two awards we're going to present, and we'll do some photos as well.
I know you're receiving this on behalf of your staff, because I know that without staff, without qualified staff, you can only do so much. So congratulations, all of you.
I think we'll do the photo here so we can get the seal.
You okay?
I'm sorry, Cindy, if I could just take a moment. I'm lucky enough tonight to have several of our finance staff members that are here graduating from Citizens Academy as part of their required financial training, and I just want to recognize them. We have Lena Williams, Christina James, and Ginger Norberg, and hiding in the back is Soraya Zapata, because she's too nervous to come up. Everyone works very, very hard for this, and it is a group effort, and I do want to congratulate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Completed by City Staff. Mr. Landon.
Cindy's night. Stall in here a little bit, make sure she has a chance. Okay. You know, a few years ago, when our whole country, actually the part of the world, was struggling with revenue and expenses matching, and we all had to find ways to cut back, we challenged our staff to figure out how to attempt to provide the same level of service at less cost. And a lot of effort went into that. And over the last couple of years, we've looked at ways to reduce our costs and bring the same services to the community. And that's really what people are expecting and demanding from us, and that was a challenge City Council gave us. We've been quite successful by challenging our employees to attempt to bring some, and quite a bit of work, what we call in-house, instead of contracting it out at a higher cost, actually trying to save money by seeing if we couldn't use our existing resources, sometimes additional resources, as long as it was less cost than what the private sector was charging us. In this past year, we were extremely successful. And some of you on City Council said, we need to get that word out to the community. The community lots of times doesn't realize the efforts of our city staff to make these type of cuts and yet still provide the services. So I challenged Cindy to put together an informational piece. City Council has seen this, but we thought it'd be a good idea to play it here at a council meeting, so the community can see it. We will play it on our website and also on TV 199, so that hopefully people appreciate the hard work of some very, very dedicated employees. If you'll take it from there, Cindy.
If you had the opportunity to sometimes do it yourself and not pay someone else, all the while taking pride in ownership and accomplishment, well, wouldn't you? That's exactly what we did when the economy flushed and budgets got tight, and when our swales overflowed, so did opportunities. A chance to respond to challenges by cultivating greater in-house service and capacity for the city's maintenance and rehabilitation needs, renovation projects, and new construction and design. In short, meeting the demands of a full-service city with a talented workforce, together, we're bringing in-house.
The City of Palm Coast uses its employees for a variety of new construction, survey and design, maintenance, renovation, repairs, and technical work. Our city administration and staff take great pride in the work they do for the citizens of Palm Coast and the betterment of the city overall. The City Council's philosophy of using in-house talent began several years ago when our annual operating budgets decreased, but our residents continued to have high expectations for quality city services and city beautification. By doing projects in-house, we are able to reinvest the savings and do additional improvements that otherwise would have to wait, while at the same time lowering our property taxes. This is a philosophy we're moving to more and more, and the payoff last year was greater than ever. One of the first major projects we brought in-house was swale rehabilitation and maintenance. The success of that program led us to explore other kinds of jobs that could be taken on efficiently by city employees. We soon began to take on landscape media and maintenance, and then construction. The construction of the four soccer and lacrosse fields at the Indian Trail Sports Complex in summer 2011 was the first major construction project where we acted as general contractor on our own project. We found again and again that we were able to complete these jobs with a high level of quality at a lower cost and in a timely manner. So in 2012, we greatly expanded our in-house program. Today, the city evaluates every new project on the front end to determine whether it makes sense for staff to do them or to hire out the job. We take this analysis very seriously, because we understand that when we choose to do a job in-house, it means that we are not able to award a contract to a business. Our decision is based on financial factors as well as the availability of employees, the needed equipment, and the time and the schedule, and whether we have the expertise to perform the work. And it doesn't always make sense. The Three Sisters Water Control Structure, which the council awarded a bid for in January, is an example of that. We were unable to do that in-house because of the size, scope, and need for specialized equipment. When we do decide to do a job in-house, our city departments work together, taking a project from planning, survey, and design to actual construction to the maintenance phase. The Belter Median Project, the segment we completed from Whiteview Parkway to Ponce de Leon Drive, and the segment we're doing now from Ponce de Leon to Royal Palms Parkway, is a good illustration of the interdepartmental nature of a typical project. Survey work for the Belter Median Project was performed by the Engineering and Stormwater Department. The Planning Division of the Community Development Department designed the landscaping, and it was put into CAD by the Engineering and Stormwater Department. Construction was done by Public Works Streets and Drainage Division with such types of work as grading, irrigation installation, planting trees, shrubs, and ground cover, and mulching and staking of the bed areas and trees. Just as we evaluate each project for whether it should be done in-house, there can be some aspects of an in-house project that we choose to contract out for one reason or another. For the Median Project, we contracted out the irrigation design, road boring, and the laying of the sod. road boring, and the laying of the sod. Upon completion of construction, projects go into the maintenance phase by Public Works. To show you how we figured the savings for each line item, we'll use the new gateway and neighborhood sign constructed last year on Palm Coast Parkway East as an example. We hired an electrician to do some work, but the majority of the gateway sign project was done by our crews. Everything from surveying, landscaping, and irrigation, sidewalk installation, striping, putting in the median crossing sign, lighting, solar, and building the actual sign. We did a detailed breakdown of our costs and compared those to the estimate from our consultant, Bellamo Herbert. You can see the construction costs here. By building the gateway and neighborhood signs in-house, we saved just over $70,000. Overall, our success has been greater than we ever envisioned. Our experience over the past few years shows us that in addition to saving taxpayers' money, in-house projects are quicker because we have direct control over the project and because they don't result in the change orders we sometimes see with contractors. We have more flexibility to divert employees when a weather emergency or unexpected repair comes up, and we found that we have the ability to do more special projects during winter due to the seasonal nature of landscape maintenance. Still, being more efficient is the driving factor, and we take pride in giving our community more while balancing a tight budget. Every time we analyze whether it's a good idea to bring a job in-house, we look at the cost first. With swale rehab and maintenance, our cost is 2/3 what it used to be. It costs us $8 per linear foot compared to $12 per linear foot when we contracted it out. And that enables us to do significantly more swale work each year. The city saved nearly $100,000 by building the new sports fields in-house, and the expansion of the Indian Trail Sports Complex has been a key factor in the success of our Prosperity 2021 goals related to sports tournaments. An example of where we're spending less while accomplishing significantly more is with ditch maintenance. Previously, we were spending half a million dollars a year on ditch maintenance. Last year, we spent $260,000, and we were able to more than double the number of feet we can maintain. So we're able to do more for our residents while spending less. We have known all along we were saving money on our many projects, but we had never compiled a comprehensive list of savings until now. In preparing the list for the fiscal year that ended September 30, we figured our costs for labor, equipment, and materials for all types of work done in-house this year that had been performed in the past by an outside contractor. In some cases, the number is a firm figure based on a bid or a past contract. In other cases, we reached a number using an engineer's or consultant's estimate. We added a 10% overhead for the city's labor and equipment. For new construction, design, maintenance, renovations, repairs, and technical work, we determined that last year, the city of Palm Coast saved an estimated $2.27 million by bringing it in-house. As far as the city's philosophy as we move into the future, we plan to keep asking the questions, crunching the numbers, and evaluating whether it makes sense to do projects in-house or to hire a contractor. We are very proud of the accomplishments of our employees who are guided by the policies established by the city's leaders. Our crews are not your typical government maintenance workers. We have provided training and built a skill level to include design and construction. In closing, here is a comprehensive list of the types of work we are currently doing in-house and how much we saved last year. We have several pages broken into the categories of maintenance, repair, and renovation, new construction and design, and technical work. We also have listed a few smaller projects where we don't have specific savings estimates, but where we're confident we saved money. With the opening video, we asked the question, "If you had the opportunity to sometimes do it yourself and not pay someone else, all the while taking pride in ownership and accomplishment, well, wouldn't you?" That's exactly what we've done, meeting the demands of a full-service city with a talented, full-service workforce. Together, we're bringing it in-house.
I think that's an excellent presentation. And I'm sure I speak for everyone on City Council when we talk about the pride that we have in our city employees. This kind of savings wouldn't be possible if they didn't share the same pride in their city, in their community, and in their work product. So this is a kudo for everyone in the city.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. A couple of us were present at the opening day for Little League up at the Indian Trail Sports Complex, and we were joined by State Representative Travis Hudson. And we're sitting and chatting, waiting for the throwing out of the first ball. And he was looking around, and he said, "You know, this is the first time I've been here." He said, "This is magnificent." And that was done as a cooperative venture between the school board, the city of Palm Coast, using in-house labor. And we've got a truly magnificent facility there. And when a state representative comments on it, you know it's got to be pretty good. Agenda item number six, ordinance amending Chapter 7, Alcoholic Beverages of the City of Palm Coast. Code of Ordinance to Eliminate a Conflict with Other Sections of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 7, Section 2, Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, providing for conflict severability, codification, and for an effective date.
Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is truly a housekeeping item. It doesn't change anything. It just, our current code has two sections in which alcohol in our public parks and recreational facilities is addressed. One of them is an alcohol section, and the other one's in Parks and Recreation section. The latter one was more recently adopted, and it made very clear that drinking alcohol in our public parks and recreational facilities is not allowed unless you get a permit for a specific event. It may be an event such as a wedding reception, a family reunion, maybe a city special event. It may be one of our civic clubs that has a weekend event. All of those require them to obtain a permit so that we know that it's going on and that there is some control over that. That's what we've been doing for a number of years. We're not proposing to change that. However, my favorite legal eagle here found a conflict in the code that had an old section that only addressed this facility and Florida Park, I believe is the name of it, which now we call Holland Park. And that old section only addressed those two parks. And so Mr. Reichman has suggested that we have only one section, and that that section be consistent with our current operation and the current status, the fact we've got more than two recreational facilities in Palm Coast. And that is all this ordinance does tonight.
Council questions?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. We changed here in Section 2, Chapter 7, Section 2B prohibition. We changed B to another, to a newer B. And the new B, it's a little different. And the latter B, which is the old B, it had a paragraph or had a sentence regarding sell or offer for sale. And that was left out of the new B, 2B. And I was just wondering why that was left out. It says that it shall be unlawful for any person to purchase or sell or offer for sale. And in the new section, it doesn't have that in it.
Well, if I could address, the new one says it's unlawful to possess or consume alcohol. In other words, you can't have alcohol in a public recreation.
You couldn't sell it if you didn't possess it, in other words.
Right. However, on some of the city special events, we do actually sell alcohol. Not just us, but let's say a civic club. Lots of times, we'll actually sell the alcohol. So to keep that in there would be inconsistent with current practice. But it's still, the current ordinance, obviously, if you can't possess alcohol in a park without the permit, you can't sell it. So it's still covered unless you get your permit.
So Mr. Reichman, to Mr. Lewis's point, is this sufficiently broad that it would prohibit the sale of alcoholic beverages without a permit?
Absolutely. And what this language that you're finding in Section 2, the new Section B under 7.2, is virtually identical with the language in 42-169, which is what, which is the section that Mr. Landon has indicated the city's been operating under these many years. Again, the language in Section 7.2B is old language from the year 2000. And it's dated. It actually, as Mr. Landon indicated, dealt only with the Palm Coast Community Center and Florida Park, Community Park. So while that language existed on the books, Councilmember Lewis, this language was not the language that city staff, your city administration, was following. It was the language in Section 42-169, which is being repealed and being placed in Section 7.2B.
Well, Section, well, B is really similar to the 42, Section 169. I mean, it's almost identical, really.
Yes, sir.
But what I'm getting at is the fact that you're telling me that when you say it's unlawful for a person to possess or consume any alcohol, is the same as purchase and selling?
Obviously, the language is different, but the practical effect from purposes of enforcement is going to be the same. If code enforcement goes out and finds someone out there selling alcohol, they are going to be enforced that as a prohibition under 7.2B, under the language that they are possessing alcohol without a permit under 7.2B, as amended.
Bottom line is, there's no change. This would not result in any change in current practice.
Correct.
That's the purpose, yes, sir.
And I find it's kind of hard to say selling and consuming are the same. But that's your...
Obviously, they're not the same. What I'm trying to say, Councilmember Lewis, is that while the language is not the same for purposes of enforcement, it still will allow city staff to go out and tell someone that's out there selling alcohol in our parks that they are violating code and to stop or be cited.
Are there council questions? Seeing the open meeting to the public, aim for the public which will be heard on Agenda Item 6. Give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. What is our legal responsibility on this? If somebody comes up to us or to the staff and says, "I want to sell beer at your next barbecue affair," and he gets a permit, and he sells beer, and there's an automobile accident, and they're both drunk drivers, what is the legal responsibility of the city? Because we issued the permit, and they got drunk on city property, I guess you can call it. So that's what I'm asking. Do they have a right, or do they have a legal right to sue us?
Thank you, we got an answer. Next question. Next speaker. So you know, approach the podium or close the public portion. We can go back to council, but first, Mr. Reichman. City liability.
Well, there's not going to be any liability just for the doctrine of the policy. There can be an exception to sovereign immunity for operational negligence. So if there was negligence in the execution of the, of issuing the permit or monitoring the permit, there could be liability. Having said that, these permits are not issued unless there is insurance that is procured, naming the city as an additional insured.
And the primary liability, of course, goes to the person selling.
Absolutely. I mean, your point is well-taken. A party through a lawyer can name anyone. But I'm just raising, there are certain defenses that can be raised in opposition to such a claim. And in addition to that, the city will either be insured through the insurance policy procured by the recipient of the permit, or will be covered on our own policy with the Florida League of Cities.
Additional council questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve? Is there a second?
I have a second, and I have a comment.
Motion and a second. Go ahead.
Thank you. I had a few emails about this, and I just wanted to clarify that this is not what we had a lengthy discussion on at workshop about the city acquiring a license to sell alcoholic beverages. This is a completely different item that, with just cleaning up the language for our permitting of the usage permit in our facilities.
Thank you for that clarification. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? No, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember DiLorenzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Although I'm uncomfortable with the language, I'll vote for it.
And Mayor Nets?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, resolution supporting initiatives limiting youth access to all forms of candy or fruit-flavored tobacco and other nicotine products. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this actually came to us as an idea from the Flagler County Health Department. And they are trying to support a campaign that is attempting to reduce the dependency of cigarettes and nicotine that possibly could be happening because of a very interesting marketing strategy. Ms. Williams, if you could come up and invite anybody else you would like to come up, I think you have a student with you, to please enlighten City Council and the community about your efforts.
Teresa Williams, Flagler County Health Department. And this is Melissa Boils, our SWAT student. Actually, I brought Melissa along to do the presentation. I met you all at the workshop last week and gave you a little background, but I didn't want to steal her thunder. So I would like to present Melissa to you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, as Ms. Terry said, my name is Melissa Boils, and I am currently an 11th grader at Flagler Palm Coast High School. Since about 6th grade, I have seen my peers rise above the influence of peer pressure and drugs, and I have seen some who have not. I have seen bright students cut off years of their lives, and I've seen family members pass away much too early because of the deceit and manipulation big tobacco practices. But it wasn't until 9th grade I realized that I could change that. I have the power to educate. So I'm here today as Chair of Flagler County Youth Center, Students Working Against Tobacco, a member of Flagler County Executive SWAT Board, a student in the Tobacco Free Partnership, and an elected statewide representative for SWAT. And it is my responsibility to educate the public of tobacco's harms, tell you how big tobacco's doing it, and lead others in the pursuit of health. The idea that tobacco kills isn't a new one, and neither is the concept that they're targeting youth. But their methods of doing so are. The Lotus Project is an initiative led by Big Tobacco to entice potential buyers at the age of, wait for it, 14. So how do you appeal to children? How can you ensure the 1,200 replacement users will be there when the same 1,200 people die today alone? Let's think about what kids like. Chocolate, vanilla, green apple, cherry. Now, I question you. How many middle-aged men do you see walking out of the store with green apple cigarettes? Chocolate snus? Vanilla dip? May I ask permission to approach? Ms. Terry has a display that I would like you all to see.
Please.
With wrappers that look like pixie sticks and containers that resemble Tic Tacs, how easy is it to become accustomed to the idea that tobacco is okay? Companies pay to have their flavored candy products put in certain areas so that kids can see them, so that kids can relate the bright colors and fancy lettering to candy.
I don't know if the camera can zoom in on this or not.
Not only that, but tobacco has this repulsing stereotype that women who smoke are sophisticated, sexy. Men who chew are rebels, fearless. That anyone who does cigars are rich and mysterious. And it is because of these ideas that big tobacco implants in our society that one in every six children ages 11 to 17 have tried flavored candy tobacco. But in Flagler County, that statistic is worse. Instead of one in every six, it's one in every five. But we have the opportunity to change that. 150... 115 other cities have already passed candy flavored resolution urging vendors to cease the sale and marketing of all candy and flavored tobacco products. If we have the power to prevent youth from putting their life on the line, we should. If we show our youth that we are not being deceived and manipulated by the schemes big tobacco, big shots, put on, they will be all the more willing to follow us in our footsteps. So I ask you to please establish a candy flavored resolution for the youth of the city of Palm Coast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Counsel comments, question, council questions?
I only have a comment, Your Honor. People that think that our youth are going to heck in a handbasket should take a good look at this young lady.
Amen. Any other council questions? If not, we'll open the meeting to the public and aim for the public, which should be heard on this agenda item. See, no one approach the podium, we'll close public portion meeting, go back to council. City Council, I hope, will pass this resolution. But that's all it is. It's a resolution. It adds our support to the support of hundreds of other cities in urging our state legislators to take action. But each one of us, when we go into a store and we see these products that are clearly designed to entice the very young to start down the road of tobacco addiction, it wouldn't hurt if you went to the clerk, you went to the manager, you went to the owner, and you said, "I object to that product being sold to our children." Public pressure has a lot to do with what they will sell and how they will sell it. So with that, back to council, additional comments, questions, or a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution supporting initiatives limiting use of access to all forms of candy or fruit flavored tobacco and nicotine products.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number eight, resolution approving the purchase and sale contracts with Peggy Lane Wachovia Bank Cypress Point at Palm Coast for land needed in the Palm Coast Parkway six laning project. Mr. Landen.
Mayor, City Council, this is a project that literally got started before we became a city. So it was over a decade ago, and there's been a lot of work, a lot of effort, and we are in the final stages. One of the final stages is to obtain small portions of right of way needed to accomplish the widening of Palm Coast Parkway over 95 and the areas on both ends of 95. However, as a result of some recent questions, the fact that we are getting very close to starting construction this year, and we have some new council members who really haven't been involved in this, I asked our project manager, Carl Cody, to give the history, the background, and kind of go over exactly what this project is about, and then at the end, get into the details as to what you were being asked to take action on tonight. So with that, Carl, if you'll please go through your presentation.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to start off by just going over some history of the project and then get into specifically what we're here for tonight. Palm Coast Parkway six laning project is a project that has funding through Florida Department of Transportation. And typically, with those types of funds, there are certain processes and steps that you need to take to spend that money. DOT has a process. It's outlined here. There are several phases along the way, and I will get into each one of these more specifically in further slides. Just to go over the specific limits of this six laning project, it is a roughly 1.25 mile project, which starts just west of Cypress Point Parkway and then extends east, just east of Florida Park Drive. And what exactly does the project entail? It is, it's a widening project. The existing roadway is a four lane divided rural section roadway, which is a roadway that does not have curb and gutter, and is going to be upgraded to a six lane divided urban section, which means we'll be adding curb and gutter along the roadway. And the widening will take place in the outside lanes in each direction for the entire length of the project. The existing bridge over I-95, when that was modified in the past, it was built to accommodate the six laning of the parkway. The DOT process, the initial phase is basically a planning phase. There's a long range plan. Basically, on any project, a needs assessment is conducted, and the typical factors that are looked at are the capacity and the safety of that area. This project started way back in 1989 as part of Flagler County's comprehensive plan that identified at least a segment of this project needing to be upgraded to six lanes. Back in 2000, when Flagler County upgrade, updated their comprehensive plan, it was listed again as a project. And in 2003, when City Council moved forward with DOT seeking grant funding for the project, it was included in the priority list. And in 2004, it was part of the city's comprehensive plan. The next phase of the project is the PD&E phase, and that was funded by DOT. Back in 2006, City Council adopted an agreement with DOT to complete that phase of the project. That phase includes a very comprehensive analysis. DOT refers to it as Efficient Transportation Decision Making Process, ETDM. It includes federal, state permitting, resource agency review that looks at such items as archaeological, wetlands, flood plains, threatened and endangered species, mobility, noise, safety, many aspects. So there were many public meetings. The two most recent ones during that phase of the project were in 2009, there was a public information meeting, and in 2010, there was a required public hearing. And in November of 2010, that phase of the project was completed and fully approved by DOT. At the completion of the PD&E phase, then move into the next phase of the project, which is the design phase. In October 2010, City Council again approved an agreement with DOT for that portion of the project. We again held a public meeting that reviewed the design, outlined the project and some of the specifics. And just recently, the final plans were completed here in January of this year. And right now, we are currently in the right of way acquisition phase that began last year. During the design phase, the exact specifics of the required lands that are necessary for the project are identified. There's, you know, legals and sketches, maps drawn up, and we began negotiations with the property owners. And in February, a week ago, we presented those areas of purchase to City Council. And the next phase after the right of way phase is completed is the construction phase. And right now, we are tentatively scheduled for construction to occur, begin in 2013 and end in 2015. DOT currently has the funding allocated in the current fiscal year budget. We have some agreements that will be coming forward that will need to be executed, and we anticipate bidding and awarding the project this summer with construction beginning in the fall. And this here just shows some more detailed overview of the specifics of the project. There are several items, I guess I'll get into here outlining some of the benefits of the project. A lot of them have to do with some of the safety improvements. I just listed some of the benefits here. Obviously, the, one of the main ones is reduced congestion. Basically, you increase your level of service by reducing the travel times along that stretch of roadway. You improve safety for the vehicles and pedestrians, as well as the potential for accidents. It's improving the mobility for emergency vehicles. We improve westward hurricane evacuation operations. The project is going to provide an eight-foot sidewalk along the roadway and the bridge in both directions to pedestrians and bicyclists. We're providing dedicated turn lanes where now we have bi-direction lanes that we have left and straight lanes. We are providing concurrent left turns at Cypress Point intersection and Old Kings Road. This will allow more traffic to flow through that intersection at a time. And we are providing a slight extension of the street lighting along the project and enhanced landscaping, and as well as conversion of the existing irrigation system from wells to reuse. And in, recently, we've had questions about tree removal along the project, and I just wanted, I have this slide here to just provide a little education on how the city, the code looks at trees. Any tree that is six inches in diameter or greater that's not an invasive species is considered a protected tree. When you remove a protected tree, there's a mitigation calculation you have to mitigate for removing that tree. The next level, there's a, there's several levels of mitigation dependent on the type of protection the tree has. When it reaches, basically, you start protected trees and then you move to specimen. And specimen trees vary on diameter based on the type of tree that it is. And then when all trees reach a 36-inch diameter, it's considered a historic tree. And this, this table here outlines the specifics of this project, and I'd just like to start out, we are not removing any historic trees as part of this project. We do have 14 specimen trees that are being removed. However, we are replacing those, we're mitigating by planting 40 trees in their place, which is 57% above the required mitigation calculation. We do have 157 palm trees being removed. And this table is slightly different than what I presented last week. We did go back through the design, the recent design documents we got in, and we have been making adjustments to protect some of the larger trees as much as possible and working with utilities and street lighting. So this here is the final numbers. It is slightly different than what I did present last week. Getting back to the palm trees, there are 157 being removed. We are planting 192 new trees, which is 129 over the code required mitigation calculation. And just to summarize, there are a total of 395 trees being removed, and there are a total of 458 trees being planted in their place. And a lot of the trees that are being removed, you can see 157 are palm trees. Another nearly 200 are pine trees along the project. And most, almost if not all, the trees are not native trees. There were trees that were planted at one point or another as part of the road project or an enhancement along the roadway. This is a snapshot of the expenses regarding this project. Currently, DOT has funded a majority of the project. We have expended just over 1.6 million, and DOT has funded 1.356 million of that portion. Then I'd like to get into the part of the presentation now. We are here today for right of way acquisition. There are five parcels that are necessary for completion of the project. There is one on the east end, and there are four at the Cypress Point intersection area. I will start at the east end of the project, which is at the Wells Fargo Bank site, which is just east of ABC Liquors and Old Kings Road intersection. The area highlighted in purple on the map here is the area of property that is necessary for the project, is roughly 540 square feet. And it was appraised and valued, and we came to an agreement at $20,000 for that piece of land. These are some photos of the site, just showing, basically, that area of land is currently a side strip of grass alongside the sidewalk. And these are just some more photos. The next area of property that's necessary is at the intersection of Cypress Point Parkway and Palm Coast Parkway. It is a part of property that is owned by the Cypress Point at Palm Coast Owners Association. It is some common area. They have some stormwater retention ponds at it. The area here, again, shaded in purple or magenta, is the area necessary. There, there is more than one parcel of land here, so it was broken up into three purchases. Parcel 100 is on the eastern side of the intersection. It's 1,267 square feet, valued at $25,920. Parcel 101 is the triangular clip on the western side of the intersection, which is 712 square feet, valued at $14,640. And then parcel 800 is the rectangular strip along the parkway at 2,668 square feet, valued at $54,427.20. And this here is some photos of that intersection. And if, just wanted to go back to the map here, the necessity for the taking of this area, you can see in the map here, there's some light shaded gray areas. That is new pavement. It is part of the improvements to the intersection, where we'll be replacing the signal with a mass armed signal. We'll be increasing the radius of the intersection corners, as well as modifying the medians there to get the concurrent left turn lanes functioning, and also providing the capability for the large trucks coming in and out of that roadway heading to Lowe's and other commercial retailers in that realm.
Can I ask a question? Go back for a second.
Sure.
That long strip of purple, the, not the triangle part, but going back here. Whose property is that?
That's all part of the Cypress Point Association.
Okay.
If we go back, these two blocks in yellow, this is one parcel of that association. This is another parcel. They're both stormwater ponds.
Right.
And then the last property owner we're dealing with is Peggy Lane LLC, which is the Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins. Again, here, we need a strip of land along Palm Coast Parkway, roughly 2,343 square feet, valued at $60,900. And basically, it's this area, it's this grass area where the sidewalk currently is And that ends the right of way, then, project presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Ferguson?
The cost of acquisition is borne by the city of Palm Coast.
The acquisition is, phase is fully funded by DOT.
Okay. And what would the loss of tax revenue be, given that it was in the private domain before and now will be in the public real estate record, approximately?
I, I'm not able to answer that question at this time.
Mr. Mayor, really, and councilmembers, it really depends upon whether this, whether these acquisitions will cause any decrease in the value of the remainder of the parcels. Obviously, and this would not be, this would not cause a modification in tax revenues anytime in the near future. It would have to be ultimately evaluated by the property praiser's office. And if they determine that there was a decrease in the value of the remainders of the parcels, then there could be a slight decrease in the act of law on taxation coming from this.
Other questions? I have two questions. Those parcels on the westernly end, will that have any impact on the existence of those detention ponds, the fountain therein, or will that remain unchanged?
It will not affect that pond at all. The impacts are basically, let's see. Currently, now, the existing sidewalk is on private property, and by adding, by adding this turn lane in here... And by adding, by adding this turn lane in here, we are, we are basically pushing the swale over slightly. And in turn, we'll be having to regrade the land in this area where the existing sidewalk is now. So there will not be any impacts to the pond capacity, the berm. Basically, there'll just be some regrading of the sidewalk.
I was thinking more in terms of aesthetics.
No. We are actually adding some landscaping in that area. Right now, it's basically a sidewalk and sod, and basically, that's what it's going to look like when the project is done.
And my second question, coincidental to this, I've received two or three emails in the last week or so expressing concern about stacking on people on Palm Coast Parkway turning north onto Old Kings Road. The concern was that on several occasions during heavy traffic hours, they had to wait through two cycles of the light. Will this concurrent left turn lane improve that circumstance?
Yeah. This project will allow concurrent left turn lanes only in the Palm Coast Parkway direction. The concurrent left turns, when you're heading north and south on Old Kings Road, will not be able to function as concurrent left turn lanes because there is a left turn lane that is also a straight-through lane. So until Old Kings Road.
These are people who are on Palm Coast Parkway, I believe, heading eastbound wanting to turn north onto Old Kings.
Yeah. This will assist that because people heading in opposite direction on Palm Coast Parkway will be turning left at the same time. So theoretically, that cycle will, timing will go quicker.
You have two lanes that do that. Will it remain two lanes or will there be, you can't really have a third lane there to go, to go onto Old Kings Road off of, off of Palm Coast Parkway, turning left. There are two left turn lanes concurrently that you can turn left.
Yeah, there, there will be two lanes. There's two lanes now, there'll be two lanes in the future.
So to address the mayor's concern, which I've heard also, that's putting more lanes on Palm Coast Parkway won't mitigate that.
Well, you'll have these people turning at the same time these people are turning. So right now, these people turn and you have, these people have to wait till turn.
Yeah.
So by turning at the same time, you're saving a cycle on the light.
Okay.
You'll get more time to turn.
And by having a dedicated right turn lane, you're going to have three through lanes going through the intersection. So that straight-through lane timing should be shorter as well.
Yeah, I think that'll help because you, you have to wait a long time to turn left onto Old Kings because of all the other traffic that has to go through that intersection.
Other council questions? Seeing none, open the meaning to the public, aim for the public, wish to be heard on this agenda item.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. When you get to Cypress, that becomes a fallen highway now. Is it, are they anticipating any kind of, of a bottleneck in that area? Or on the east side where it, where the six lane stops and it goes into four, isn't there going to be some kind of a, you know, a bottleneck where you got six lanes going into four? I, I, you know, I'm trying to look at this and I don't see how you can avoid it. You know, how you can avoid, especially during traffic, during the, the heavy traffic when you, when Palm Coast Parkway is, is jammed and you get down to Cypress, where you get down to the other end, isn't there going to be some kind of a conflict there?
We'll get a comment on that for you. Next speaker.
Ron Redford, Palm Coast resident, councilman, mayor. My question is from Old Kings Road going east on Palm Coast Parkway. Right now, we have private developers that have been advertising heavily on the south side of that road. Will we have to also declare eminent domain to widen that road at that point?
I'll get an answer to your question.
Evening, everyone. Dennis McDonald, Palm Coast. Here to talk about the, the tree issue, which has come up a couple of times here. There's been a number of ladies that have been upset about the fact that there's going to be approximately 400 trees disappearing from the, the roadscape. So what I would like to suggest to the city is do what professional developers do when they have a situation like this, and it also saves us money. What we do is we set up a grid system, and if the tree is sizable and a usable tree, we move it with a vermeer. If it's done properly, the tree never even knows that it got moved. You save all the money on new planting because you don't have to look at the ugly trees and the, and many of the other things. And maybe that would, might be a nice midpoint for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
May I ask another question?
Counsel? Sure.
You can ask two, ask two more questions.
You have banked some time from the previous meeting, so yeah.
I remember going back a few years where they were supposed to get rid of that, that triangle on Old Kings Road and, and Palm Coast Parkway. And you're supposed to get rid of that exit for whatever fast food that was. Are we going to do, are we still going to do that or am I, am I picking out of the weeds? Because I remember we were supposed to eliminate that completely and make it part of a turn. Or, you know, that's, that's quite a while ago and mine ain't that great.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you don't approach the podium, we close public portion meeting, come back to counsel. My intuitive answer to the first question, six lanes going into four, my own experience is that the, a very large proportion of the westbound traffic is turning either onto Boulder Rock or onto Cypress. So you will lose a lot of the traffic. Otherwise, Carl, how about the six lanes into four? Are you going to have a, create a bottleneck there?
We actually have three lanes, it's going to be three lanes into three lanes. West of the end of the project, it already is three lanes, so there is no bottleneck.
The three lanes go to two lanes at.
On the east end.
No. We're talking west side. It actually turns to two lanes both ways at Bel Air. And then, of course, a lot of traffic will turn on Bel Air and that's where you, the right turn lane, the, the outer lane becomes a right turn lane to go north on Bel Air, and that actually works quite well. On the east side, it's a little different situation.
Right. Well, we have Florida Park.
Yeah, Florida Park. Does that change, Carl, as to?
No, it, it, basically, that's what happens. That turn lane turns left, heading north in Florida Park, and the other two continue straight into the two lanes heading east.
So the transition between the six lanes to onto four lanes headed eastbound at Florida Park doesn't change. The inner lane becomes a left turn lane where you have to turn on Florida Park, and then the through lanes become two through lanes as you go east.
Correct.
Okay. The second question had to do with the property Palm Coast Parkway eastbound in the vicinity of, I guess, between Old Kings and Florida Park. That property that was recently purchased. Will the city require eminent domain for this project?
No.
Third comment, the feasibility of transplanting existing trees. If you've got a, a really nice tree, the possibility of digging it up and just relocating it, is that something that we can look into?
We have and have projects looked at relocating trees with contractors and had them price it. One thing that's done a lot, our palm trees are relocated typically on road projects like this where your, your space is limited. The contractor, and it's a long-duration project, we're talking a project that is going to be almost two years long, the contractor has to remove the trees, find a place for them, water them, protect them, and then replant them in their new location. And that labor and time involved, relocating them more than once typically is cost prohibitive and it's, it's been less expensive to replace them. We, we do give the contractor options to replace trees, but they typically almost never entertain that. It's always cheaper for them to, to plant new ones.
Nonetheless, it would seem to me that if you've got a really, of the, how many trees removed, 390, three?
Yeah, three.
Whatever, whatever the number is, the 395, I know from my own experience, some of them are rather unattractive pines, some of them are rather scraggly palms, but there must be an occasional nice tree in there. To the extent that those might be salvageable, either to relocate to this project or someplace else in the city. It's something I'd think we could look at.
Okay. And Carol Bennett, our urban forester, would be taking the lead and work with Bill Butler, our landscape architect. We'd be happy to do that. I think that's a good idea. I, I think, Carl, probably it wouldn't eliminate planning the new ones because of the concern of duration. It would be more of removing them from their current location, but maybe another city park or another city streetscape, we could incorporate them.
I know we've been raising, in a collaborative venture with the school board, we've had tree farming down at Flagler Palm Coast, and they've been using those trees on, on school campuses. Maybe something to look at.
We did, we did that on Bel Air North. Is that what you were going to say too, where, where our, our city crews went in and relocated them and placed them in different locations, a golf course, some other city locations? Okay, we'll do the same here.
And the last question has to do with the median triangles on Old Kings Road. I remember a long, long, long time ago, I think maybe my first or second year on city council, that was a topic of discussion. Will this affect either of those median triangles?
And just so I'm clear, that is the, just east of the intersection of Old Kings Road, there's the, the sign, and then behind the sign, there's this lane that cuts through the median. Basically, to do a U-turn. That is being removed, eliminated as part of this project.
Okay. What about the, the median on Old Kings Road north of Palm Coast Parkway? I know we've tried over the years to do some landscaping there, but there's no, there's no irrigation available, so that, I know Bill Butler had some difficulty making anything nice out of it, but will that be affected at all or will that be part of the Old Kings Road widening?
Yeah, there'll be some slight modifications, again, to, to work on the turn movements at that intersection and some pedestrian crossings. So there'll be some small enhancements, creating some stamped median tips and reconstructing those medians. But they will be affected by the ultimate Old Kings Road project, so there's not a whole lot of work going into that at this point.
Okay. I just, just as a comment, I find it interesting. We always hear that, that government moves slowly. This Palm Coast six-laning project dates back its inception in 1989. Just amazing. All right, we're back to city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move approval of agenda number, item number eight.
Well, seven on the agenda.
Seven on the agenda.
It's renumbered, this item.
Resolution approving the purchase and sale contracts with Peggy Lane LLC, Wachovia Bank National Association, and Cypress Point at Palm Coast Owners Association for land needed in the Palm Coast Parkway six-laning project.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number nine, appoint three applicants to fill vacancies on the code enforcement board, two regular members and one alternate. Mr. Landon, you want to offer any comments?
I think the, the staff right up here outlines what, why appointments are vacant. You have three of them and you have three applicants. Any other details? Virginia is taking lead on this and she can fill you in on any details or questions you may have.
The top sheet will be, the top sheet will be for your regular members and the second sheet will be to designate your alternate.
Okay. And obviously, anybody selected on the top sheet gets removed from the bottom sheet.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we need to pick, round one, we need to pick two members to serve as regular.
And then you want us to fill out the bottom one?
I don't think he can do that until we've made the select because.
Okay.
You may, you may remove somebody from the second sheet by virtue of being selected on the first sheet or something like that.
We have five votes for Mary DiStefano, four for Ernest Roberts, and one for Leslie Sills.
Is there a motion to approve Mary DiStefano and Ernest Roberts?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Okay, now, we need to pick an alternate.
Gee, I wonder who it could be.
I think we're down to, to one name.
Is there a need for a vote?
May we have a motion to appoint Leslie Sills as the alternate to the code enforcement board?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. That was relatively easy. This brings us to the consent agenda, items 10 and 11. Does anyone wish to remove either item from the agenda?
I have a question. It's not about removing, it's a question about one of the items. This goes to the white fleet.
Mm-hmm. That's agenda item number 11.
I guess the number's the same, I don't know.
Yeah, they remain the same at this point.
Okay. And I was wondering, for the benefit of the audience and for the people who were, who are listening, if we could just explain, there are three items in here.
Why don't we, why don't we remove that one then, so we can have a discussion on it?
Okay.
We'll consider agenda item number 11 removed. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda item number 10?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. Number, agenda item number 11. This is a resolution approving purchase of budgeted white fleet from Duval Ford and Allen J Chevrolet Cadillac, Inc. Mr. Lewis, what's your question?
There's a chart here and it's called proposed placements.
Can you give me a page in the?
I believe it's.
Oh, maybe I've got it. I've got it. Thank you.
Okay. And there, there are three columns. One, this says the projected placement cost, additional costs for whatever that is, and then the actual placement cost. And this is for some explanation on those three columns, how they work until the final cost.
Okay, so we have, we have a series of vehicles proposed to be purchased. We have projected replacement cost, recommended replacement type. Mr. Adams, can you?
Sure. The projected replacement cost was budget. The additional cost for CNG, that's natural gas. So if we were to purchase those vehicles equipped with natural gas, that's how much they would cost. And then the actual is the price that we've received.
And just, just for the benefit of, of people listening, when we arrived at our current contract with Waste Pro, one of the options was that they would create, construct, build a CNG compressed natural gas plant that we would have access to. So there is the potential for savings on fuel as if and when that plant is constructed and as if and when we purchase vehicles that can use it. So it's an option that's available to us, but not one that we're pursuing at this moment.
For the benefit of the audience as well, you can see that not all vehicles are available to be equipped with CNG, but most of them, if you were to purchase them equipped with CNG, they would. CNG, they would cost about fifteen thousand dollars apiece additional, each vehicle.
So then, going back to the budget issue, fifteen thousand upfront cost versus a lower fuel cost, you need to factor in the age, the projected age of the vehicle, the projected mileage.
Yeah, we're keeping an eye on the market. The factory-equipped CNG vehicles is still not readily available for most of the size vehicles that we're looking at. They're pretty readily available for things like city buses, garbage trucks, larger fleet vehicles for your average pickup truck or utility body-type truck. It's not readily available off the assembly line, so you have to retrofit, and that's why the cost is so high.
Richard, what about the maintenance and any downtime or repairs that you'd have to do to a CNG tractor? Are we, is our staff capable of doing that?
At this time, we aren't trained to do so. I would assume that there would be additional equipment and training necessary to bring us up to speed if we were to start.
So we'd have to add that cost.
But I think we -- exactly. I think we could get there if we needed to. If we found that CNG vehicles were economically feasible for us, we would definitely be able to get the employees trained.
Do you know whether the downtime is any significantly different than a regular diesel tractor?
I couldn't answer that question.
Okay.
If CNG was available, vehicles were available at this time, what impact would they have on our budget for replacement?
Well, that's -- I guess you could buy CNG a little cheaper than you can buy diesel. Right now, the cost differential in the cost of the vehicle would never, you could never pay for itself with the savings in fuel. And the concept was that once the Waste Pro got equipped to fuel CNG, then we would piggyback on their facility if we were to find vehicles to be within a reasonable price. The problem then would be is we'd have to go to Bernal to fuel up. So we have to take all those factors into consideration before we take the leap to purchase CNG vehicles. And right now, that's part of why we show it on the spreadsheet, is that we're showing that it's not yet economically feasible.
It would be interesting to get some data from Waste Pro relative to downtime for a CNG tractor as opposed to a diesel tractor.
Right. And currently, the Flagler County facility is not up and running yet.
All right, thank you, Richard.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DeLorenzo.
Richard, the projected replacement cost, is that equal to the capitalized cost of the vehicle, so what is paid into fleet for the life of that vehicle?
No, actually, the projected cost is adjusted for what we thought the vehicles would cost at the time we put together the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Since this was removed from the agenda, we'll open the meeting to the public, aim for the public wish to be heard on agenda item number eleven.
Ron Radrick, Palm Coast. Mr. Mayor, aren't you violating one of the things that you stated earlier when you said shop local? Why are we going out of town to purchase these vehicles when we have local dealers in town?
Get you an answer to that question. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Have we investigated any other municipalities that have this type of system, and are they up and running? And how long do these vehicles last? I mean, how long do they last? How maintenance? Are they prone to this, that, or the other? You know, you have to have more than one study, and you can't depend on this particular study, because they're only going to give you what they think you're looking for. So I would say I would look hard at various things to find out about this whole matter.
Thank you. Next speaker. So you don't approach -- oh, sorry.
Bob Jergel, Palm Coast, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to rather speak a bit sarcastically, which I consider a tale of two cities, west Palm Coast and east Palm Coast. West Palm Coast has a magnificent north-south boulevard.
Mr. Jergel, is this relevant to the purchase of vehicles?
No, it's -- there's a public participation.
I know. That'll come.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Don't go away.
I won't.
Anyone else on agenda item number eleven, which is the purchase of budgeted vehicles? So you don't approach the podium, the closed public portion meeting, go back to council. Mr. Landon, Mr. Adams, we've got a Ford dealership here in town. Why are we not buying Fords from them?
Mayor, we actually went to them and offered them to participate, and they had declined that they were not currently set up to deal with a commercial fleet at this particular time. We also went to the local Tom Gibbs dealership, and they declined as well.
We've actually, in the city manager's office, talked to some of them, and they say they just cannot compete. The manufacturers, if you will, the makers, set up these large fleet, commercial fleet operations, and the smaller local dealerships can't compete. And because we have so many vehicles, the thousands of dollars per vehicle adds up to hundreds of thousands of dollars, and so -- but we would love to buy local if we could, and it'd make economic sense, but it just doesn't make -- it doesn't make economic sense. Our dealerships understand that, because they're part of that industry that creates these large fleet operations in urbanized pockets.
Another would make me happier to buy these locally if they were willing to sell them locally. The second was more of a comment or a caution. We're not proposing to buy any CNG-fueled vehicles, and I think, Mr. Adams, you made it abundantly clear that before we go down that road, we need a lot of data, a lot of studies. I don't know of any communities in the area that are using CNG. The biggest problem, of course, is even if we, even if it was a great idea and it was cost-effective, we don't have the supply available to us at this point, so buying a truck that doesn't have a fuel source doesn't make a lot of sense.
That's correct. And we are, like I said, keeping an eye on the market. We've visited a couple of other cities that do have CNG facilities. Hollywood, Florida is one, and they are kind of in the startup phase of trying it over in Apopka. So we're watching what's going on over there as well. We've visited both those sites, and we are also in communication with the people that build fueling facilities and see if, when it becomes feasible for us to maybe do that ourselves as well.
Okay. We're back at city council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion on agenda item number eleven?
I move, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt resolution approving the purchase of White Fleet, piggybacking the Florida Sheriff Association contract number with Duval Ford and Alan J. Chevrolet Cadillac, Inc.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Mr. Jergel, come on back up.
I apologize for the interruption. My tale of two cities, a little sarcastically, but east Palm Coast and west Palm Coast. The council has approved nice improvements to, like Bel Air Parkway, the big parkway that runs north and south on the west side. They're now landscaping a large portion of the south median meticulously designed, new trees, new plants, new grass, new everything. You've approved the rebuilding of Pile Lakes Parkway north, one over a little over one mile of that, new roadway, new turns, new medians, all up to the latest fancy specification to the west side. And I, for three-plus years, have been pleading that you pave Old Kings Road south from utility drive down to Town Center Road, a rumble road, terrible. You know, Old Kings Road has never changed since I've been here for 25 years. The patch, repatch, put this, put that. That is our north-south for the east side people. We don't get that. Every time I've asked, I've been told by a rather stoic Mr. Landon, "We don't have the money." So what I go do -- yet you have money to do all the landscaping on the west side, rebuild roads on the west side, and nothing on the east side. And I just wonder, you know, when I worked with Mayor Canfield on the committee to incorporate Palm Coast, our motto was that we, the citizens of Palm Coast, have the right to control our own destiny. And we, on the east side, don't do that. People on the west side apparently have all the influence, and we don't. And Mr. Meeker and his successor have never said anything about improvements to the east side. They vote for all the improvements to the west side, but not to the east side. Now, maybe it's a facetious argument, but as a guy who drives south on Old Kings Road, you know, I go past that terrible landscaping that we have. We've talked about that for years. There's no water. We can't get water for it. Ever hear of a tank truck? We certainly could water that, get a decent thing. That looks like South Bronx. I think at some time that we better pay attention. I'm asking my councilman from my district, newly appointed, to look into the matters of the east side, who he represents, and not participate in condoning and consoling all the people on the west side. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I don't believe that we need to reinvent the wheel. And when it comes time for this CNG, for instance, today, I had gas delivered to my home by a truck that was powered by CNG from Cunningham Corporation. And I know in New York, there were many companies that were converting to this new form of energy. I understand that we have so much of natural gas available that the price for this fuel is going to be very cheap, yet it's also clean burning. And so, you know, going all the way to Miami or wherever they've gone to research whether this CNG works, right in our own backyard in Daytona, Cunningham, they've been using it, and they've been using it successfully.
Thank you.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I hate to bring up an old dead horse, but since I haven't been here, I gotta say this. Mr. Mayor, you used to, I remember, you know, years ago, not years ago, but on occasion, you always refer to your crystal ball to see what was in the future, and you couldn't because you had no crystal ball. So I see that now you all have a crystal ball. You're all going to say that the population of Palm Coast is going to increase in five years, we're going to need more homes, more housing, and we're going to get more jobs, and we're going to be number one again. That's your crystal ball. The economists, when I read in the papers, they're not too optimistic about that. They don't know if we're going to come out of this safely or not, but you people know. When you put out the -- excuse me. The additional monies that you're taking, the 4%, let me ask you, how is that going to affect the impact fees of the future, of the builders? Are we going to give them a break because now we're going to have a little bit more money, so we could give them a break on the impact fees so they can build more? Or are you going to stay the same as it is now, whatever it is? It's going to cost us a million and change for the sewer on, was it Saint Joe's Walk? Where is that money coming from? We just, you just did the electrical wiring on one of the pumps up north. Where did that money come from? I mean, if we can do this, that means we're on steady ground. So why do you need a raise? If you can, if we're doing what we're doing now, and we're getting along with it, why do you need more money? The money you're getting now, how is that money being used? You know, efficiency is what counts here. So if you've got good efficiency, you can do with a little less money. And to get off the subject, let me make it official. When are you going to put the plazas on a map? You dug up this, Mr. Joe said, whatever his last name is, I'm sorry, I forget, forgive me. Shop Palm Coast. I'll bet you couldn't take 50 people out there and they couldn't tell you where a plaza is.
Fifteen seconds.
Well, I'll take the 15 seconds. But I'd like to know just what is going to happen. Are you going to do it? I mean, this, I brought this up about four months ago, and I don't see any -- people don't know where the plazas are, that's all it is. If it's a plaza, there's a shopping district. If there's a shopping district, there's a store. And if there's a store, they'll spend their $25.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dennis McDonald, for the record. I'm here to follow up on the discussion we've had a couple times here, and it really comes down to one fund in this city and how it interrelates to a number of different things. That's the Utility Capital Project Fund. So I've been doing a lot of research on ordinances and resolutions that this city has put in place, and what I come to find out is that in the resolution that created the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District, it was called out in there that it would have a special, the special assessments would be made and completed, and it says here, "It is anticipated that the assessments will be imposed upon the validation of the obligations in 2008 and 2009, with collection commencing in November of 2010." To the best of my knowledge, we haven't done that as of this time. So that made me rather curious as to why this isn't happening. But this is a long time. It's November 2010, and this whole thing started in 2008. So when I look at the ordinance, I was trying to see if there's something holding things up. So I look at one section here under administrative actions, and it simply says here that the city manager has the authority to implement provisions of this ordinance and delegate any such duties to any person that he or she may deem necessary and appropriate to beneficially accomplish the proposal in the ordinance. Hasn't happened, gentlemen. So what this leads me to think is, what's up? Why isn't this happening? Why are we going three years and this isn't happening? Bottom line is, we have to look at who we're funding, okay? We have made a loan, and I don't quite see, understand how this loan has been made, but we'll get to that in a minute. We made a loan to what amounts to be, 20% of that loan went to Walmart, 65% of that loan went to Flagler Pioneer Group LLC, the -- The manager, or the member of that LLC that is the managing member is Tom L. Gibbs, and the other 15% is to Kings Point Developers. The managing member, again, would be Tom Gibbs, but the bill goes to, it also is listed on the assessor's site as James E. Gardner. So essentially, what we're doing here is, we're running a special loan for some heavy hitters. And last time I was here, you whacked everybody for a sizable utility increase. Also, we're gonna spend a million dollars in what you guys voted on tonight as far as the road widening. You're gonna take a million dollars out of our Utility Capital Fund, and you're gonna use it on Old Kings, okay? We don't have it. You just told us we don't have it.
15 seconds, please.
So I'm trying to find out exactly how this fund, the money got out of this fund. And the editor to the observer keeps on saying that it can't get out of there. This is one of his articles. It's not allowed to go out, and I find that to be quite amazing, seeing as how we have no money.
Thank you.
Hope to get some answers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, go back to council. But first, the first comment about east versus west, that's a strange turn of events because for many years, I heard nothing but complaints from the west side of Palm Coast that all the money was being spent on the east side, so... But the bottom line to the speaker is, Old Kings Road is high on our priority list, but as with Palm Coast Parkway widening, the majority of the funding is coming from DOT. And we are in a state of flux with DOT, in that we are now going to become part of a new transportation planning organization, and the prioritization of our projects will blend with the prioritization of other projects. The only thing I can tell you is, it's something we're going to continue to pursue. Compressed natural gas, the second speaker. There may well be fleets using CNG now. Mr. Adams, if you're still here? Is he still here? No, you don't have to come up, but contact Cunningham and ask what their experience is. I'll take all the information we can get. Third speaker. Made reference to our crystal balls. The reality is that most of the projected data comes from other agencies. The projection for growth over the next five years is a projection not made by city council or the city manager. It's made by the University of Central Florida, the Bieber, that, they are the premier crystal ball reader for the state of Florida. Accurate or not, in fact, we've taken a position to say that we're going to scale back a little bit on their anticipation. We don't think we may grow that rapidly, but it would be foolhardy not to provide for that possibility. As far as impact fees, there was a question raised. City council has, on one or two occasions, discussed the overall issue of impact fees. There have been moratoria declared in other areas, and we've said, we've debated back and forth, is there any data showing it works? It doesn't work? I think part of the question had to do with the utility, and because of our data collection, the impact fees for the utility are going to be reduced somewhat.
Right. I can...
You can probably give us more information than that. And then the last speaker, speaking about, again, Utility Capital Projects, Mr. Landon, why don't you just bring us up to date on the utility issue? The loan, the, I don't believe we loaned any money to those private individuals.
I'm gonna ask Chris Quinn to come up and maybe help answer a couple of details. Yeah, I'll be happy to tell the story about the utility because it actually, once again, is a good story. Let me, let me start off with the impact fees. One of the things that we have implemented as a result of reduction in growth and reduction of revenue is we've drastically reduced our capital program. And that's one of the things city council really stressed, is only do those projects that are absolutely needed to meet the regulatory requirements and to keep the system operating in an efficient manner. And the impact fees are based on those capital improvement needs, and there's actually a calculation. So when you reduce your capital projects and your capital needs, the, by law, you have to do the calculations to determine how much of those, that capital, of those capital projects should be the responsibility of new growth versus the maintenance and operation of the system. And as a result of that, yes, some of the impact fees for water and sewer, as a result of the recent study, were reduced somewhat. But it is a financial or accounting calculation. It's not a judgment call, one way or the other. The accountants actually do those calculations for us. Now, for the other, other issue of Old Kings Road, yes, I think I will be somewhat redundant because some of you have heard this before, but when the Old Kings Road South project was originally proposed, it was proposed by property owners who agreed to tax themselves to pay for the widening, from the two lanes to the four lanes. And city council, I believe it was '08, actually established the district or started that process. I'm not sure exactly what the dates were. Mr. McDonald said something about '10. But yes, a special improvement district has been established, and the boundaries have been established. But the idea was, the improvements would be all the way from State Road 100 up to Palm Coast Parkway. The concept was that the city would go to the bond market, use the property values as collateral because it was going to be a property tax assessment to pay back the bonds over time. And those, that, those payments would be only for those people in the district and not the rest of the taxpayers. Then what happened was the values of property throughout the country went the wrong direction, and as a result of that, the bond market dried up. And so the city was not able to go to the bond market. So what we did is a couple of things. One of them, and the reason why we, actually, is three, three very significant items. One of them was, why did we do the four lanes from State Road 100 up to Town Center Parkway? And very simply, trying to create jobs. We had Walmart, major employer, about 400 jobs they promised to create, and said, however, the current road doesn't fit the alignment to be able to do this. And in the city's effort to try to help create those jobs, we agreed to move forward with that southern section. Once again, with the assurance of the two other critical parts that city council approved, and that is that that loan was going to be a financially smart decision. And it has turned out that way from a financial standpoint because the $5.3 million that the utility loaned the district, we had in the bank for less than 2% interest. Our loan, which is being paid by a portion of those property owners, is at a 5% interest. So Mr. McDonald did not, there's another document out there, and that is the agreement that for the first three years, we would collect interest only on those, those payments. The reason for that, once again, was trying to determine what was gonna happen with the bond market, what would be the long-term wisest way to fund this long-term. And because three years ago, everything was so volatile, it, there wasn't a whole lot of good options unless you had a good crystal ball. But we decided instead of having a good crystal ball, we would charge those property owners 5% interest. They have paid that interest every year. So to say we haven't been collecting, we have been collecting. They've been paying 5%, which represents, over that three-year period, almost $450,000 net increase over what we would have made if we had just put it in the bank at less than 2% interest. The total payment, Chris, I believe, was 600, a little over 600,000 or a little over 500?
It was, over the three-year period, it was about 640,000.
Okay. So the property owners have paid the utility 640,000 in interest over the last three years. So from a financial standpoint, that made a lot of, that goes into the utility fund, which offsets the operating costs that the rate players are not having to pay. So from a financial standpoint, if you can make that kind of interest, it makes sense. The last thing that city council did, and that's part of the ordinance and part of the documents, was guarantee the utility would get paid back. This is low risk because they have already established the legal requirements to assess those property owners. And so that was the other critical part of this, is that there was never a risk that those property owners would not have to pay for the road improvements via their property taxes. And for those of you who may not know this, and hopefully, a lot of people don't know this because they don't go through this, is that if someone forecloses, gets foreclosed on their property, the tax obligation doesn't go away, so we're guaranteed to continue to receive taxes, including that special assessment from the new property owner, whether that's a bank, or if we have to foreclose on the property, we'd use the property to pay it. So the three key components of that was, we were trying to accomplish creating jobs, which was a high, high priority in the community at that time and still is. And by the way, Walmart owns the property. Walmart went through the approval process in front of city council for that project. That wasn't just a pie in the sky. They put the capital into buying the property, they went through the approval process, but then they pulled the plug on it last minute. Secondly is, smart investment from a standpoint of making over $400,000 in the three-year period on that loan, net. And lastly, still having that guarantee that we will get paid back by the property owners who are obligated to do so. Now, with that said, and for city council, I think you're aware of this, but we need to keep you up to date, is that because the entire district was intended to go from State Road 100 up to Palm Coast Parkway, which isn't practical now, and there still is not a bond market out there that you, is available to us to have property be the collateral, that we have to adjust that district. And we are working with the property owners to adjust the district because, obviously, the northern property owners don't have the benefit because it's still two lanes. And we are working on how we can try to fairly adjust that bound, district. The cost is a lot less because, obviously, it's only a portion of it, and that is coming back to city council. You've already taken action a couple of months ago to assure that we can start assessing those properties via the property taxes versus a contractual arrangement we've had the last three years. And the property owners are very much aware of and have acknowledged that the utility has to be paid back. It's not an option, it is a requirement. The utility has to be paid back, and they know city council has legal means already in place to make that happen, and we are working on it. But we need to work on it in a financially responsible way, too, for, for all parties, and that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. I think that deals with questions. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Mr. Carroll also mentioned about efficiency in the utility department, and we did realize $700,000 in savings in the utility department. And I think, Jack, you, you missed some of those presentations, so maybe we can get you a copy of that presentation where you can see where those efficiencies were improved.
Thank you. This brings us to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, why don't we start with you?
Jonathan, your honor.
Mr. Lewis?
Your house.
Mr. DiLorenzo?
No.
Mr. Ferguson?
No.
And I'll pass. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Ditto.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I would like to call up my favorite fire chief. Since I only have one, I guess he can be my favorite tonight.
You gonna tell us about that big cloud of smoke up the north end of the city?
Well, first of all, it is, I asked Mike to do a couple of things, is it is fire season already. I mean, it's, it seems like it starts earlier every year. And so just trying to make people well aware of the fact that we are in that type of year where it's dry, we haven't had much rain, doesn't take much to get the fire started, and we've all seen the kind of devastation it can cause. And then, secondly, brief city council and community as to what we've already accomplished and the fact that we've already been asked to do mutual aid south of us because, if you looked out in the horizon, it's a real serious situation here the last week or so. So, Mike, please fill in on the details.
It's actually ugly. Thank you, Mr. Landon. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the big column this morning, or this afternoon, when I got multiple calls, was Washington Oaks State Park. They had a prescribed burn scheduled, and everybody's saying, wow, on a day after we've had so many fires, so forth and so on. There's a lot of factors that go into when they make that determination. Relative humidity, wind speeds, the wind direction. The wind direction was evidently pushing in the right direction for the burn and the material they were burning. As far as I know, everything went real well with that, although it put up quite a cloud of smoke, as everybody in town saw. We, we get daily morning briefings from the Division of Forestry, things like the relative humidity. My brother's in South Florida, he said, man, this is great weather. I'm so glad I'm not in Jersey where they're about to get snow. It's a great day. I said, yeah, in your world, it's a great day. In our world, it's really a bad day. The relative humidity's been staying around 25%. Anything under 40%, 35% is really sketchy, but under 40% causes really sporadic fire behavior in our world. So these brush fires that are, that are kicking up right now, there's 25 active wildfires in central Florida. I don't know what the other portions of the state have, but I'm sure that they're as busy as we're starting to get. Saturday, as Mr. Landon stated, we were called to assist in the Ormond Beach Fire. Durrance Road, which is the southern boundary going into Volusia County, you can see it right off I-95, it's just south of, what is it, 40, in the 40 area? And it ended up closing I-95 because of the wind shift and the smoke. We were called in for our brush units. We had a brush unit, one of our tac units, scheduled to go. They staged at the county EOC, and they stayed in the county, is that, because a lot of the units from the county had already gone south to assist. Our operation on a call like that is, depending on what the call is, they weren't urgent to be protecting structures, so we call our volunteers, and let the volunteers get down and handle that kind of a backup. Had they called us for mutual aid for structural protection, which they do regularly, then we automatically send one of the career trucks and then backfill with, with the career and the volunteer. So it depends on what the call was. Saturday, luckily, it wasn't that we needed to get there right away. They had the county helicopter down there, they had county resources down there, they had Volusia County, Putnam County, I think, was called over. So we all play real well when it's this time of the year. They just put the call out, and we get, we get help. Whether we're going or coming, we don't really worry about who's paying the bill at that time, we worry about that on the inside. So they've been down there since Saturday, mopping it up every morning, the county with Volusia, and then we're just keeping our resources, luckily, right, right here in the county to help should anything else break out. We do kind of caution people, if you see smoke or smell smoke, it's gonna happen. The winds are shifting, we're gonna get an easterly component, so it's gonna probably push it away from us, maybe in the next couple of days, which is good. But we kind of, if you see a big column of black smoke, and it's going up, and it's closed, by all means, call, and call 911. Calling the fire department's not gonna do any good. We, we have to call 911 to get it into the system, to get all the right units going. So we encourage people to call the 911 center if they actually feel there is a fire. Many people call us and just say, well, I see the smoke. Well, we're gonna see. We're trying to put out the news releases, as we get them every morning. You know, we're not all on the computer, and we don't get all of them. So we just urge everybody to be cautious, be careful. It is fire season. Fire season starts January 1st and ends December 31st, as I like to say it. It's really just taken off really bad this year. Pray for rain, but the rest of the week... Pray for rain, but the rest of the week's low humidity, high winds, we don't know what we're in for, but, but hopefully, things will be kept in check.
Mayor, if I could follow up and stress, and Mike and I actually talk about this on a fairly regular basis, our number one priority are structures in Palm Coast. And we make sure we keep enough resources here for that number one priority. But we also know that whatever, wherever the fire is, that jurisdiction is gonna need help. And, and so, if it's not here in Palm Coast and our structures are not threatened, then we will help. But guess what? When it is our turn, because it will be our turn, then they come in around and help us. But they will do the same thing, and they'll keep their priority of their structures and their community because that's who's paying the bill. But it is that mutual aid that really works. But we always understand, and Mike and I have that, that understanding, where our priorities are. And we'll, we'll continue to make sure that our structures here in Palm Coast are protected, but also helping other structures and other, other areas whenever we can.
Yeah, fair enough. And, and we currently, on Saturday and Sunday, I know they put task forces together. In our world, task forces, maybe a couple of woods trucks, a structure engine, other equipment like that, that'll respond wherever it's needed within the county. We are part of the statewide mutual aid agreement. Hopefully, we'll never get back to that point, but, but we know how to push the button, we make a call to the county EOC, the emergency manager calls the state, and we start getting resources. Hopefully, we won't, we won't get into that. But as Mr. Landen said, we know our first priority is the city of Palm Coast. We call in resources and we track everybody when they go off a shift. Tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, everybody that's going off will be accounted for, whether they can come back, how long it'll take them to get back, in case we need them in a hurry, as well as our volunteers.
Any council questions?
Still got that sticky, fire retardant stuff that you sprayed on your house?
No, that's a long story. But it's still out there. I know that, it's called Barricade, and it was used in 98 wildfires when it was first designed, and it was designed by firemen, yeah, out of baby diapers. Baby diapers absorb, and, and so, these two guys got together with a chemist and made this stuff. I believe FPNL still uses it. They have a truck that'll come out, when we have a wildfire coming, they will go to the side of the fire, the head of the fireside, and coat their poles with this. The fire goes past it, this stuff sucks up the heat. Mr. DiLorenzo, it really does work. You got that smirk like you're crazy. I thought so too until they did my house.
I'm friends with an FPL lineman, I'm gonna ask him about it tomorrow.
Ask him. We've tested it, they've, more generations of it, they had it for homeowners at one point, but the problem with that is the timing factor, if you didn't put it on correctly, so forth and so on. But the stuff really does work, and FPNL does it, and they save their poles, thereby they kill the grid, the fire runs through without, without being energized, saves the poles, and they can re-energize the grid and we can go back to work, so...
Except you can't get it off.
No, well, you can get it off, but it takes the paint off the, how, yeah, that's another strain, but he wants to hear that bad story. But yeah, it's great paint remover, the old, but it's still out there as far as I know.
Chief, Mayor, if I, one more thing. I know this weekend, when I saw the smoke out south and heard about it, I made my phone call to the guy that helps clean out our gutters. Because I'm not gonna get on the roof, but, you know, I think just the word, the message is that now's a good time to clean out the gutters because those little embers that fly around, when the fire gets fairly close, if they land in your gutter, that is lots of times the start of, of the house fire.
Yeah, relative humidity being at 26%, the embers from, from those fire, campfires when we were kids, and you hit it and all the embers went up, they eventually went out like lightning bugs. They stop. With relative humidity at 26%, they don't go out. And they, what we, in our world, call spot fires. And they, I don't know how far it was spotting, I know they had spot overs at the Ormond Fire. And that's, those embers are just carried distances, a couple of years ago with the Espinola Fire, they were spotting a mile ahead, meaning the base of the fire was putting up those embers, and another fire started a mile ahead. And it's kind of tough to keep up with that kind of stuff. The big thing that we want to put out to our residents is charcoal, believe it or not. When those, those cool nights are coming in and we like to go out and barbecue, that's great, but charcoal lasts and lasts and it does not go out. So we recommend you put it in a bucket of water, let it sit for a day or two. Typically, what happens is people want to have the barbecue two nights in a row, they clean the barbecue out, they put it in a bucket, they run next door to the empty lot because it's not gonna bother anything, it's gonna go back into the ground, they dump it, and about four or five hours later, they call fire department, say, all I did was have a barbecue over there, but that lot started on fire. A lot of times, we find out it was charcoal just got going underneath the ground and eventually started a little brush fire. So charcoals are really a big thing this time of the year. Clean your gutters, keep, keep the trees away from your house. By all means, if you see a column of smoke, call the fire department, through 911.
Thank you, chief. And I'm just gonna add my personal pet peeve. For goodness sakes, most, almost every vehicle I know is equipped with an ashtray. It just drives me nuts, especially in this weather, to see people flicking lighted cigarettes out the window.
Absolutely.
Please don't do that.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you anymore. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's all I had. Thank you.
That's all? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.